In accordance with the State Sunshine Law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on October 6, 2011, to the Hillsborough Beacon and Courier-News. Let's rise to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we need a roll call, Mr. Mahmood?
Surely. Mr. Bogushevsky? Mr. Gillette? Mrs. Haas? Mrs. Haley? Mr. Kintz?
Here.
Mrs. Lay?
Here.
Mr. Pulcifer?
Here.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Here.
Mr. Pageant?
Here.
All right, we're going to go into executive session. I'll read the motion. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975, provides that a public body will exclude the public body from the portion of meeting of which the public body discusses certain matters for which confidentiality is required as permitted in Section 7B of the Act, resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Hillsborough, the County of Somerset, and State of New Jersey as follows. The following matters to be discussed are student disciplinary matters related to Hillsborough harassment, intimidation, and bullying. The matters discussed in executive session shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. I need a motion to that effect?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions? And we are in executive session. A roll call, Mr. Mahmood?
Mr. Bogushevsky? Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Mrs. Haas? Ms. Haley?
Here.
Mr. Kintz?
Here.
Mrs. Lay?
Here.
Mr. Pulcifer?
Here.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Here.
Mr. Pageant?
Here. All right, we're closing the old meeting, and we'll be back, and we're opening a new meeting in just a moment. Ask Rutgers why that is. All right, I need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? And abstentions? So that meeting is closed, and now we're moving on to our regular public meeting. In accordance with the State Sunshine Law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on October 6, 2011, to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier-News. We'll go with a roll call, Mr. Mahmood?
Sure. Mr. Bogushevsky? Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Mrs. Haas? Ms. Haley? Mr. Kintz?
Here.
Mrs. Lay?
Here.
Mr. Pulcifer?
Here.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Here.
Mr. Pageant?
Here. We have no correspondence, so we're moving right on to our superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's a pleasure to see so many people out this evening. We're going to be starting a special part of the superintendent's report entitled Spotlight on Students, and this will be the first time we're doing it. We actually have two schools represented here tonight, Amsterdam School and Hillsborough Elementary School. We have many students and many teachers, so why don't we get it started by introducing the principal of Amsterdam School, Dr. Mary Emily.
Yay! (applause) Good evening, everyone. This evening is about celebrating our students, and we have an exciting project that our students did in our 4th grade, and because it's all about them, I'm going to let them explain the project to you.
Who came up with the idea for these poems? These poems were inspired by George L. Lyons' "Where I'm From" poem. This project originated in the diverse city of Richmond, California. The project was developed to help the youth of the community connect to their family's history and where they came from.
So the teachers at Amsterdam thought this project would be a great way to start the school year. It would give the students an opportunity to get to know one another, as well as build community within the school class.
How did the 4th graders at Amsterdam prepare to write their "Where I'm From" poems?
To begin the unit, 4th graders read the book The Keeping Quilt by Patricia Palacka, which focuses on the importance of family traditions. Then the students interviewed and reminisced with parents and grandparents and learned more about their families' histories and traditions.
After the 4th graders interviewed their family members, what did they do next?
Next, the teachers modeled how to complete the pre-write by breaking it into stanzas. Once the teachers had modeled how to complete the pre-write, the 4th graders used their interview answers to help them write their poem.
So once the students finished their draft, what did they do next?
Teachers conferenced with the students, and then the 4th graders arrived and edited their poems with a peer.
After that, the 4th graders published their poems on large chart paper, and then created life-sized portraits of themselves holding their poem.
Wow, that sounds really neat.
Yeah, and we displayed our poems and portraits in the hallway so our parents could see them for back-to-school night.
So, were you finished with the project after that?
Not yet. We practiced reading our poems aloud because the teachers videotaped us reading them. Then they put together a movie using Windows Movie Maker and showed our parents the movie at back-to-school night.
And we'd like to show you a clip from one of the Amsterdam 4th Grade "Where I'm From" movie.
(applause)
I am from Ashring, from my colorful craft closet in Caresburg. I'm from the sweet and cozy home made peaches now on a hot summer night. I'm from the youthful miracle of the cornstalls who long gone ones I remember as if they were my own. I'm from Italian cookies every Christmas and Dad's dance. From Lindsay and Heather, I'm from playing donkey party too much, shaking our legs and dancing whenever we hear music. I'm from sticks from the stones to break your bones or words that won't hurt you. Treat others the way you want to be treated in Jingleton all over the star. I'm from dancing in a cat every year from Hell's Row, Italy, Germany, Slovakia, Ireland, Scotland, Hungary, Lithuania, and London, Ohio. From my great-grandmother, she wouldn't go on the Titanic, but her sister got sick, so we could not go. My great-grandmother did still 102. On a family, 2007, 2008, family photo album in my kitchen shelf so everyone can see my zodiac.
I am from Bel Air, Carolina. I am from Liam's Man in Crystal, from candles full of scents and centerpieces of flowers. I am from quiet rooks being rather full of memorable historical stories and fantasies full of magic. I am from the extraordinary fields of wheat, where they balled oak tree shading mentioned my neighbors, whose long-gone limbs I remember as if they were my own. I am from Easter at hump on Easter morning, and rich cake on Halloween.
From great-great Aunt Clara and Uncle Peter. I am from church on Sundays and Walmart for coffee in the morning. And from television free until homework is done.
I am from if you don't have anything nice to say, don't say anything, and it's before you act.
And the stars sparkle there.
I am from water, bird, crystal, and shining cabinet.
I'm from New Jersey, Italy, and Ireland, spaghetti and meatball, corned beef and cabbage.
From my father, he um, he's from Milwaukee now.
I'm from my father's surviving.
I am from great-grandma's wedding ring, in my mom's storage box waiting for me until I get older.
I am from a fluffy pillow, from a brand-new iPod, and a broken brown bookshelf. I am from the big white shelter of daily life, the smell of juicy watermelons in my bathroom.
I am from the garden as our wiffle wall fence, the first tree whose branches are as wild as wiggly arms.
I'm from the Outer Banks and the Jersey Beach, from Rachel and Chris.
I'm from pizza on Friday and reading every night.
I'm from church every Sunday morning.
I'm from gotcha on that one, share and play fair, and look at me now.
I'm from pumpkin picking with Stefan Rich every October.
I'm from Livingston and Czechoslovakia.
Toffee cookies and mom's marinara sauce.
From when Liam broke his arm falling off his bike into the grass, we thought it was just a bruise at first.
Round pot poster my great-grandfather owned, on the wall in the living room, by Liam Smith.
I am from the soft tan couch in the shiny living room, from the used pans and the used lights. I am from the decrepit floorboards that are up on my bare feet. I am from the green healthy grass, the big itchy well tree whose long-gone limbs I remember as if they were my own. I am from Thanksgiving and Christmas Eve, from Uncle Michael and Aunt Jamie. I'm from eating dinner at home and taking chores with my mom, dad, and sister, and from going to our cousins' houses. I am from sweet dreams at night, good nights, and twinkle, twinkle little star. I am from New Year's Eve at our house. I am from St. Peter's Hospital, Italy, Ireland, Hungary, Germany, and England. Pot, pasta, and pizza, from my great-papa who was on a minesweeper in World War II. He was in the Navy. I have a mid-baby blanket in a heater in Iraq, and my heart, it will stay forever.
Thank you very much, everyone. I'd like to take a minute to introduce the teachers who are responsible for this project. We have Mrs. Jessica Newell.[741.82][741.82](applause) Ms. Ashley Davy.[745.32][745.32](applause) Ms. Joanne DeLeoni. And Ms. Elizabeth Rorice. Thank you.[752.12][752.12](applause) And a big round of applause for our 4th graders.
Great job, 4th graders. Great job, 4th graders. Let's, I think I need to be, thank you, Cass. Great job, 4th graders. Nice job. Nice, nice work. I love the way that you integrated all of that writing, and you were writing about where you were from. Very impressive. Thank you also to our teachers who came out and spent their own time, as well as Dr. Malady. Thank you very much. Now, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Volpe, who's going to share with us what Hillsborough Elementary School is doing with their safety patrols. Mr. Volpe?
Good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to, again, congratulate the students in Amsterdam School. I think you guys did a great job with that. I also have some, oh, you can give him a round of applause. Go ahead.[813.62][813.62](applause) And can I have my safety patrollers stand up over here so everybody can see you, as well as the moderator of our safety patrols, Mrs. Jennifer Hopson? One line so they can see you all. Remember, I got them here because I said, "You're going to be on TV." So that's the camera, so make sure you're looking on that, so later you can be on TV. I want to introduce about half of the members of our safety patrol, just to let you know who our safety patrol is and what they do. At the end of 3rd grade, I asked my 3rd grade teachers for students who display outstanding character traits. I don't necessarily look for people who get straight A's on every test or are always the best students, although some of them certainly are, but I'm looking for someone who can be a role model to our younger students. You know, recently, we've done a lot in this district and throughout the state about an anti-bullying campaign, and I want to let you know that I think my best anti-bullying campaign are these students that I have standing right here in front of me. Their main goal, each and every morning, is to be a positive role model to all students who come down, and I'm going to give you an example. Whether it's in the morning or, Connor, mostly in the afternoon, when I see you, what's the first thing you say to me?
Good afternoon.
First thing they do, he said, in case you didn't hear, he says, "Good afternoon, Mr. Volpe." The safety patrol's first job is to greet everyone with a positive smiling face. They're not little police officers, they're role models, and they also display confidence throughout the course of the day, too. Safety patrols, how about your official stance?[901.32][901.32](laughter) They stand legs spread a little wide, hands on the hips, and totally confident. They also make sure, besides greeting everyone hello and goodbye every morning, they make sure that students are obeying the rules, and if anyone is not, they certainly report those students to me. But they don't run after people, they don't hunt them down, they do it all with a smile on their face, and they are positive role models. One thing that I do want to make sure that these students are doing each and every day is showing respect to everyone else, staff members, fellow safety patrols, and other students, and they certainly lead the way with that, and one of the ways that we do that at HES every day, after we say the Pledge of Allegiance, is we say the HES Respect Pledge. So I'm going to ask one of my safety patrols to come here and lead that pledge so that everybody can understand what it is, and Sarah, do you want to come, you want to come over here and lead the pledge? Okay? And then safety patrols, when she starts it, can you all say it, and we'll say it together? Okay?
Uh-huh, okay. Today I promise to respect myself and respect others. I promise to respect my school and respect the world around me.
And I can say that each and every one of these safety patrols not only shows that respect, but displays that respect, and I get younger students all the time who come up to me and say, "When I'm in 4th grade, can I be a safety patrol?" And I say, "Well, only if you act like these students." So they're well on their way to being great citizens, as well as currently being great members of Hillsborough Elementary School. So if I can get a round of applause from my safety patrols.[994.82][994.82](applause) And I also want to thank Mrs. Hopson and Mrs. Muldoon, who are not here, who organize all of our safety patrol events and stations throughout the year. Thanks, guys, you can have a seat. Although I do want to keep, well, go ahead, you guys sit down for a second. Now, if you see my friend Jake here, all right? See, he's got like shoulder pads and leg pads, so he's the one safety patrol that I say, "If anybody's acting up, you can knock into him and knock him down," because he's saying. No, I'm totally kidding. He's showing real dedication, football practice. He had to rip off his football uniform and get over here to show his good character. So Jake, an extra special thank you. Thanks, everybody.[1029.75][1029.75](applause)
Thank you so much to our great role models at Hillsborough Elementary School. I ask at this time for the board's consent to take a brief five-minute recess. I think we have some kids that maybe need to go home and finish up homework and get ready for bed. Your permission? ... on students. We hope to be doing this at least once a month. The board meeting, that we're not doing committee reports, will be the time that we'll be inviting students and their families to come on and to showcase some of the great things that are going on. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Schiff. Before we move on to review and approve minutes, I wanted to welcome our high school representative of the board, Daria Gristera, and after introducing herself from the audience last week, we got her a seat, so welcome and enjoy the proceedings. Moving on to review of the minutes, we're going to review and approve, so let's start with the, what is this? September 12, 2011, public minutes? I will need a motion.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All right. Any comment or corrections? Mr. Kintz?
I have a correction. Page number seven, where it says, it's referring to myself, Mr. Kintz, stated that he's surprised that this is being looked at at jobs rather than from the state aid. I think that was probably reversed, that I was questioning why it was being looked at state aid instead of at jobs.
Correction will be made in the minutes.
All right. Any other corrections? All right, seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And abstentions? All right. Moving on to the September 26th Special Public Minutes, 2011?
Need a motion.
And I need a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All right. Any comments or questions? All right, seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on to the September 26, 2011 Executive Session Minutes, I'll need a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All right. Any comments or corrections? Mr. Kintz?
It's an omission. I don't know if this was during the conversation or comments that were on page four, if it actually occurred during the action agenda. It's with regard to the motion to approve the proposal for candidates tonight. I raised a point that it was, at that time, it was September 26, I think it's October 9th or 10th, and I was just expressing my concern about the short notice for all the candidates.
This is the executive session?
I'm sorry, I thought you were going to the regular.
We'll go to the regular next.
All right, my bad.
No problem. I'll know it's coming now. Any comments or corrections on the executive session minutes? All right, seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? All opposed? And abstentions? All right. Moving on to the September 26, 2011 Regular Public Meeting Minutes?
We already did those.
No.
We did the 12, 26 public, no, 26 executive. We did all three.
No, we did the special public.
The special public, okay.
And I think we're now doing the public.
We did the 12 public.
All right, now, moving on to the, so, for the September 26, 2011 Regular Public Meeting Minutes, I need a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any corrections, Mr. Kintz?
As a record, there was, I don't recall if it was during the committee reports or if it was during the actual action agenda for the athletes, but I expressed concern about the timing for the township committee candidates because it was relatively short notice.
Okay, we can look at the tape. All right, any other comments or corrections? All right, seeing none? Sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And abstentions? All right, that concludes the minutes. And we're moving on to maybe new business? I'm not sure. I'll get there in just a second. Yes, we're, there are no committee reports tonight, so moving on to new business. If there's any new business from the public at this time, those wishing to address the board regarding new business can do so at this time, but generally will refer them to the administration or committees or somebody to look into it. Any new business from the public? Seeing none? Is there any new business from the board? Mrs. Lay?
I have a legislative update, and if there's, there's been a lot of things happening legislatively, so please chime in because, in case I miss something. So, A2806 streamlines the process for non-public schools to convert to charter schools, and this has passed the Assembly in the Senate, and it's on the governor's desk. So this is, this is a bill that would allow parochial schools that are closing in urban areas to become public schools, and it would help that kind of transition. In addition, four out of 60 charter schools were approved in September, and none of the four are affecting Hillsborough, and this brings us to 27 charter schools approved this year alone in New Jersey, and it's the most approvals in one year since the charter school law was established in 1995. That's, yeah, that's it. There's another one, but I'll give an update at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Any other new business from the board?
May I ask a question about this?
Sure.
Or actually to, does the fact that the charter school, the four charters that were given are not in our service area, does that end the possibility that we would be paying charter school tuition in the next year? Is that over with now, or is there still a possibility?
I'm not certain. I'll have to check with the Office of Charter Schools. I do know that there is reapplication, and there's a rolling approval process. So this round, as Mrs. Lay correctly pointed out, there were actually very few that were approved out of the, I think there were 40 or so. Yeah, there were a good amount of applications that were actually rejected as well, but to answer you directly, I would have to check that with the Office of Charter School.
All right, seeing none?
Just also to clarify, we do know that Trillium Charter School, which was the larger of the two charter schools that identified Hillsborough as an initial sending area, has folded their application for this year, so they have affirmatively pulled out. The Sinoh American School has not, to my knowledge, done that, but we can, we can understand what the status of the approval process, whether they could open mid-year, which would have a, which would have a possible tuition impact on Hillsborough.
Okay, seeing no more new business, we're going to move on to the action agenda. At this time, the public can comment on the action agenda if they would like to. All right, seeing no comments from the public, let's move on to the action agenda. Dr. Schiff?
Well, we'd like to, we have, as per the Operations Committee recommendation from our last meeting, changed the format of the agenda to be aligned with the three committee areas, so we have an area for education, an area for human resources, and a third area for operations. At this point, I can certainly read through it, as I have done before, or a member of that committee can motion, and then a second can come out, and you could move that group en masse after discussion. The choices, the boards.
The member of the committee?
Right, well.
I'll tell you what, why don't we go with, you describe what's on the agenda, and we'll have our...
You'll call for a motion, then?
A motion from our committee chair, and then we'll get a second.
Okay. In the area of education, I'm recommending that the board consider the following motions. Motion to approve the harassment, intimidation, bullying, the HIB investigation list, the motion to approve professional travel and related expenses, approve the following field trip destinations, and approve out-of-district placements.
Mrs. Haas? And a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, seeing none? Roll call, Mr. Mahmood?
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Kintz?
Yes.
Mrs. Lay?
Yes.
Mr. Pulcifer?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Pageant?
Yes.
Under the area of human resources, I'm recommending that the board consider the following motions. Motion to approve staff training for Genesis, approve the following retirements and resignations as listed, approve leave of absences, revise leaves of absences, approve the appointments, including long-term substitutes, instructional assistants, mentors, substitutes, student teachers, approve intermural advisors for the 2011-2012 school year, revise co-curricular advisors for the same year, revise summer athletic camp for 2011, group changes, and approve the resolution for a part-time targeted intervention teacher to be paid out of unanticipated state aid.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Pulcifer. And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Mr. Kintz?
Just a clarification in the agenda for item B10. It mentions that the resolution for the one part-time targeted intervention mathematics teacher to be paid out of the unanticipated state aid... teacher to be paid out of the unanticipated state aid, but the actual attachment just shows the resolution for the position. Just want to clarify that.
That, that is correct. The resolution indicates.
Just the creation of the position.
The creation of the position.
Not where it's being funded from.
That's correct. The resolution that the board will be considering under, I believe it's C four today, has the resolution that specifies that particular position.
Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? All right. Seeing none, roll call Mr. Mahmood.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Kint?
Yes.
Mrs. Lay?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Pageant?
Yes.
Under this section entitled operations, I'm recommending that the Board of Education consider the following motions. The line item transfers, the approval for second reading of the bylaw entitled Board Member Qualifications Prohibited Acts and Code of Ethics, the approval of the Uniform Statement Memorandum of Agreement Between Education and Law Enforcement, and approve the use of the unanticipated state aid during the two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve school year.
Would you like to make the motion, Mr. Gillette?
So moved.
Thank you. And a second?
Yes.
Thank you, Mrs. Lay. Any discussion?
I'd like to separate items C four, please.
Okay. And any other discussion? All right. We're going to be voting from C one to C three. All right. A roll call, Mr. Mahmood.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Kint?
Yes.
Mrs. Lay?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Pageant?
Yes.
All right. I need a motion for C four.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Kinst?
The, the funding for this position is, or there's funding for one position for the use of the unanticipated state aid. In the, in the documents that was provided to us, it looks like that that funded, that position can be funded either through breakage or through ed jobs, so I'm questioning as to why it's being targeted for the unanticipated state aid.
When this was presented to the operations committee, I think the human resources committee as well, we looked at three different funding streams as we began to determine what, which one of those streams would be tapped in order to pay for those positions that I'm requesting the board to, to consider. The ed jobs fund is a one-year-and-out funding source. It is not a reoccurring funding source there. And we established a committee of teachers and administrators in order to make recommendations to the school board. Those recommendations were, were presented for, for board consideration and were, and were discussed. The targeted intervention teacher was not part of that particular ed jobs, as I recall. Mr. Rocko? It was not. The, the other items that were considered for, for breakage were, were listed within the, the documents that, that were provided. Could those monies be used for breakage? Could, or could that expenditure be taken out of breakage? The answer is yes. But the, the arrangement in order to put it into breakage allowed for us to, to feel, well, confident that hopefully we would have it moving forward as, as time went on. The unanticipated state aid, and I think this is important for, for the board as well as the community to, to understand, in the ed jobs fund, we funded four class size reduction positions for this year, for the eleven, twelve school year. If we don't have additional funding source for those positions, then we may not be able to keep those positions in subsequent years. So I've asked the board to consider allocating a part of that unanticipated state aid for those four positions, even though we wouldn't spend out of those monies in the eleven, twelve school year because we're spending it out of ed jobs. We also, we're discussing, and what was on the sheet and what has been discussed in public as well, is the addition of six world language teachers to reconstitute a world language program at the elementary level, which we're currently out of compliance. The task force has made a recommendation that the board has, has, has seen, that the education committee is going to review in, in detail, that will recommend that we do not start that particular process in January, that we delay it until September in order to properly write the curriculum, hire the staff, and ramp that program up. What that then allowed us to do was to not put that as part of the state aid expenditure, the unanticipated state aid expenditure for the two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve school year. But it will be my recommendation that we use part of those unanticipated state aids to fund the world language program in future years, beginning in, in twelve, thirteen. So I know it's kind of a roundabout answer to, to your question, but we, we tried to establish what we felt was the, you know, a good stream of, of revenue that would be predictable in funding those positions. To answer you directly again, we could use breakage if we, if we chose to do so, but that means that we would need to change the resolution that we currently have on, on the board agenda tonight. Tonight in C four is a process that the board must do if we wish to take some of that unanticipated state aid and, and allocate it during the two thousand and eleven school year, the two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve school year, this school year.
Question?
Dr. Rosenberg?
Just educate me a little bit. What do we mean by when we say targeted mathematics teacher?
Essentially, the state let us know this year, the, last year actually, that any student who falls, scores two hundred or below on the NJASK eight in either literacy or mathematics must take a targeted intervention course. So you're targeting the skill that the student needs assistance in. So we have to provide these specific courses to, to students who basically do not pass NJASK eight.
So this, this is a response to a problem we had on the NJASK, a, a, a lower score?
This is a response from the entire state, not just Hillsborough. The whole state has to do this.
The whole state has to do this?
Yes.
And this is anticipated to go on year after year? This is not a one-year?
It's, I anticipate that it will go on year after year, but the state often changes its mind, so.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Ms. Haley?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh. You can, we can hear you. I, I'm told that if, if, if it doesn't speak into the microphone, it doesn't get on the, the thing. So that's why I'll indicate to you that maybe you should be speaking into the microphone.
Yes, no? Oh, there we go. Just a little concern that we're discussing using funds in the operations committee, actually hasn't really met to talk about the unanticipated state aid yet. And my other comment is my concern with the world language program not being instituted. I'm concerned that the state is actually going to look at the funding next year that we will or will not get, and potentially use it against us because we will be, correct me if I'm on second year out of compliance with this?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. I, I just don't know if that makes a difference or not when they look at the funding. If a school district is not in compliance with state mandate, it could potentially hurt funding, I would assume, but I, I don't know.
My understanding is that they could tell us that we need to use our money to hire world language teachers. Or like, for example, the negative is true. If you have hires, if you have employees that don't fit into their scheme, such as the library aides, that's, what they come in and say is, you know, you have to reduce your, your expenditures by that amount because you shouldn't have those positions. But if they come in and say you should hire teachers to teach world language, I believe that's our intention for next year. And if the money carries over and is used in that respect, then I think, I, I don't know what, you never know what the state's going to do, admittedly, but I, I think it's a safe bet that that money will be available for teachers. Dr. Rosenberg?
I, I assume the state has not given us any kind of deadline by which we must get back into compliance. They just said we are out of compliance. There's no consequence, I guess, maybe to follow what Mrs. Haley is saying, is there a consequence of waiting for, for us in terms of dealing with the state and our out of compliance for waiting from January to September?
Yeah. I was asked this question before as well. I'm not, I'm not certain if there would be a difference between starting four or five months ahead and being out of compliance for, for a year and a half versus two years. We anticipate that as we go through the monitoring process with CUSAC, that this will be an area that, that will, will be, there'll be a recommendation from the county superintendent to, to create the program. Dr. Antunes, would you concur?
Yes.
I would just comment that at the time when the state decided to remove five percent from everybody's budget, and then we had to lose a lot of positions, that's when we went out of compliance. And now that they've chosen to fund us, give us some money back, and then we're able to bring these positions back. Also, the idea that, I didn't quite realize that the targeted math intervention position was sort of mandated by the state, which is another one of those positions where they come in and say, you have to hire this position for, for one reason or another. So it's understandable if they, they are mandating these positions that the state aid that they've given us could be put towards that position. I, I think it makes perfect sense. Any other? Mr. Kinst?
I'll just, I'll just comment. You can hear me now. So for this unanticipated state aid, there's a request to fund a part-time position that could be funded within the budget. I'd rather that this position be funded within, within the budget that we have right now, which the board, which the administration presented a while ago, represented that that was the, the appropriate budget that they would need to run an effective school district. The board approved it, so I would like to leave the unanticipated state aid for next year and use that in the best manner, and we can go through a proper vetting process. I commend the, the administration for listening to their task force with regard to the world language program. I think rather than rushing it through, we're going to have a much more thoughtful and an effective program. And then based on the funding that we get next year, with or without the unanticipated state aid, we can make the, the appropriate decisions in, in the appropriate manner. So.
Steve?
That's, those are my thoughts with regard to this resolution.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Not having been here for all of the budget discussions this spring, was the, the board and the district aware of, of the necessity of this position at the time the budget was assembled? Or was it still unknown as to whether or not we would have to have this targeted, targeted math teacher?
This position was staffed based upon the outcome of the HESPA and the eighth, no, I'm sorry, the NJASK eight, the, the eighth grade state assessment, which the results were not available until August.
So this couldn't have been handled in the budget at the time you guys were doing budget in January and February because there would have been no knowledge of, at that time, that this position was going to be needed?
In, in fairness, there, there are always unanticipated positions that we may, we may need to fund.
I mean, Greg's point was we, this should have been, that this was accounted for in the budget, we should spend budget on it. What?
I haven't spoken to that.
I'm sorry, Greg. I'm sorry. We're just so surprised, Greg.
I haven't said anything.
Sorry. Tom's, Tom's point to the fact that this, that's been accounted for in the budget, to me, doesn't sound like that would, that it was accounted for in the budget, because at the time the budget was being assembled, we didn't know, or sorry, the board at that time did not know that they would have this position. So it does seem to me that this unanticipated state aid and this unanticipated mandated position seemed to be in alignment and would not have been something that would have been considered in January or February.
That's correct.
Mr. Gillette?
I, I agree with Chris. I would like to vote now.
All right. Would you like, actually, are we done discussing it?
Just, actually, just a point of clarification. From what I read in the state documents, it requires a two-thirds affirmative vote.
That's correct.
And if there is no resolution, then it's, it's, it goes to the two thousand and twelve, thirteen budgets or and beyond. Correct?
That, that is correct. We would, however, ask the board, because we did approve the position about five, ten minutes ago, that it would be paid through any surpluses that we were able to generate this year.
All right. Seeing no further discussion, roll call, Mr. Mahmood?
Mr. Gillette?
No.
Mrs. Haas?
No.
Mrs. Haley?
No.
Mr. Kint?
No.
Mrs. Lay?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Pageant?
Yes.
Motion fails.
Motion does not pass.
Right.
Can I ask a question now?
Well, probably is a nice question, too.
Just, just for clarification, this motion did not pass, it needed its six affirmative votes. Is that, that is correct?
Yeah, that's my question. We cannot hire the teacher.
Yeah, I just made clarification that the board did create the position and that we would staff the position based upon surpluses, but it will not be paid for out of the unanticipated state aid.
So we can still hire, we're, we're still hiring the teacher, but out of a different part, uh.
We'll have to use the breakage.
We'll use the breakage.
All right. All right. We're on to the informational, and that ends the action agenda. Moving on to old business. If there's any old business from the public at this time, you can address the board with the same stipulations that we will probably refer to the administration or the, a committee or, if we can answer, we'll answer it. All right. Seeing no old business, is there any old business from the board? Mrs. Haley?
Not sure if I'm actually speaking in the wrong section, but as I've been seeing all the emails and articles about fingerprinting in the state of New Jersey for board members, I would just appreciate getting an update, whether it's public or private, on where we stand if we're in compliance, if all of our members have done so.
That's an interesting question, because I asked Mr. Mahmood that tonight. I handed in my little sheet of paper.
I guess we're thinking the same way.
Well, Mr. Mahmood, would you like to answer the, the wonderful system they've set up in, in the state again?
Ms. Haley, the, the way we've understood it at the board office is we, we had no guidelines with the fingerprinting process, so we have a phone call in to Tretton to try to ask some questions about, number one, do you, are we required to ask our board members for that certification that you were printed? What are the deadlines in terms of a timeline, like when are you supposed to have it done? And then, I, you know, we really didn't get anything, so we called out to Tretton, we're waiting for a return phone call. The issue's going to be, will they provide it to the district? I'm hoping they would. And then how quickly? We really have nothing as far as the process, but we'll hopefully have something from the Department of Ed.
Do you have my copy?
Yes, I do.
Yeah. Anybody's copy. Blah, 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 blah. A notice of qualification has been forwarded to your education facility or authorized school bus contractor making the request for your criminal.
I threw mine out because I read that.
Yeah, we, we didn't get any back yet.
You didn't get any back?
Officially from the Department of Education. Board members have voluntarily given us, like Mr. Pageant.
I tried to give you one, Mr. Mahmood. I do have it.
From what I understand, it's only, only if there's an, only if there's an issue will the school district be notified. So I know, I know I've, I've been fingerprinted and, and it's been submitted, and I can witness that Dr. Rosenberg was.
It's, it's a humorous issue, well, that's, it's not a humorous issue, but it's humorous the way the state puts these things in. They pass a law saying you have to get fingerprinted. There is no real mechanism as yet where there, that when it happens, it then gets reported to the board office. You would think those are the people you'd want to tell, because if not all nine people do it, then they should figure that out and start talking to that board member or board members. But the real. You would think those are the people you'd want to tell because if not all nine people do it, then they should figure that out and start talking to that board member or board members. But there really is no mechanism within the state to do this, so we're essentially on our honor for the moment until they get it all figured out. I think, I think most people have gotten theirs done though yet. So seeing no more old, Mr. Pulsifer.
I would like to say that I was a little disappointed to read in the newspaper this past week that the event that we had, that this board approved is, does not appear likely to occur or at least not occur in the fashion that we had discussed and what we were hoping. I understand there was not a lot of time in terms of putting that date together and making things available, but I would hope that all the candidates would work with the district or with the social studies supervisor to try and find a date that would work because I think as an exercise for our students and as something that has been missing in this township for quite a while in terms of an opportunity for the public to see the candidates for any of the offices, whether it's the Board of Education or for Township Committee, I would certainly hope that, that all the candidates and the social studies supervisor could find a date that is, works for everybody and that we can hold the event as we had intended.
Thank you. I just want to comment that I think going forward in the future, it's a great opportunity and that in the spring, there'll be more time for planning and then in the fall and so forth. So I, I'm encouraging the students to keep up their, their plans and, and that as things go along, I hope, hopefully the, the speed bumps will be worked out and the students can learn and the town can benefit and on and on. All right.
Just, I was just curious, just to continue the conversation, it'd be interesting if the Township Committee had a Candidates Night for Board of Education candidates in the fall, in the springtime. It'd be an interesting situation.
We've had them in the past, although not, not sponsored by the Township Committee, but we have had Candidates Nights in the past and I think, you know, and I'm not trying to make this political, I think both sides have the potential to try and leverage this to fit what they want, but I just think that we're missing an opportunity here for the students and the public to have this forum, for the students to learn from the forum and for the public to learn from the forum. I think it's too good an opportunity to not put effort in from, from all three sides really to, to make sure that something like this does happen.
All right. Dr. Rosenberg.
I do believe that there is a school, there is going to be a school board forum as well in April. So I, and I appreciate the fact that it's not focused on one election, but they're trying to cover all of the elections in town. And I just want to say that whatever the outcome is here, I'm a little disappointed that it won't be what it was intended, but I have a lot of confidence in the, in the district, in the teachers, supervisors and the kids in this AP class to do a good job. And I hope that there's a situation that comes about where we can give them the opportunity to show, to show the community that they can handle something like this, that they are informed citizens and they can run something that's, that has value for the whole town. So I hope that in the future, we'll be able to do this on a regular basis.
I agree.
Mrs. Haley.
I, I don't think we should be commenting on a partisan debate, period, but second, I don't remember reading anything in any of the papers that said that the students weren't capable or able to handle the debate, so I think that that's not fair to say that.
All right.
I have one.
Mr. Gillette.
I'm going to be skeptical about whether the school board can be involved in any way in any school board election debate in the spring. I'm very skeptical that, that, you know, that somebody won't say, no, you can't do that. I don't know why we're getting involved. I mean, maybe with a township, you know, municipal election, but with our own school board election, we know there's all kinds of restrictions on what we can do, what we can do with the school board elections, what the boards can do. I just don't think it's ever, that's ever going to come off. Sorry, Mr. Mingle, I don't, I don't think that, that's going to come off. I think we'll get an attorney opinions at some time between now and February, March, and it'll be that you shouldn't mess with it.
Okay.
I just want to clarify something here. First of all, it's not the school board, it's.
Well, then why, it's going to just clarify, why is it coming to the school board for our stamp?
Mr. Gillette.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. We did, we did vote for it and we did approve it because it's a, I guess, I guess it's a curriculum activity, but the bottom line is township officials, school board officials come and talk to kids all the time in the schools. This goes on all the time. The only difference here is that instead of talking to them during the school day, it's going to be at night and the public's going to be invited. There's nothing different between any of that. I mean, if, if you're saying that, that there's a problem here, and maybe there is, but then there's, then we have to be very careful about any politician doing anything with our schools at any time. And if, if we want to get clarity on this before it happens, then we should get clarity on this.
Any further comments? All right, I'm going to move.
I just, I understand what you're saying Greg, but I don't think, if, if we're not spending money on it and it's not a requirement for the students, it's an open public forum that the school board has no authority over who shows up and who doesn't, who speaks and who doesn't, only has to prove the fact that we will allow the event to occur, I don't, to me, that doesn't put the board in any position of conflict.
There could be a different slip of opinion. Mr. Gillette.
I just prefer that, that anything further along this line not come to the board. An AP history club or teacher can do what they want, do what they want. Rent out the, you know, call the township, get the municipal building multipurpose room and do whatever you want. It shouldn't be coming before this board, for either of them, that's my opinion.
Well, to, to answer that, that, this is opposed to a week, a week before it happens and, and board members are upset that it's happening and didn't know about it. So it's more of, you know, if we want to go forward and allow them to do it, then, then, and then we don't have any, we aren't touching it. Mrs. Haley.
I have to disagree with the fact that it's not going to cost us money because I'm assuming that we're going to have to pay for opening of the school and, you know, any janitors, et cetera, that are going to be there. So I disagree that it's going to not cost us money, I believe it's going to cost us money.
I believe the janitors are there anyway. Janitors are here tonight, they're here every night.
Yeah.
So I don't think we're having extra janitorial coverage for that. So far as I know, we have janitors working every night, is that, is that not the case?
That is true.
Well, then, if that's the case, I'd like to give the church that meets here on Sunday, since we have janitors working on, sorry, it's on Sundays now, I'd like to give them a break on their rental fee on Sundays, the church that meets in this school, since they're going to be here anyway.
Wait a minute.
No, all right, I, I don't know if this has become a debate or what, what's going on, but you know that's different, Mr. Gillette. You know it's a group that's renting, whereas the basketball group that comes in and uses our facilities hasn't. So if, I, I think we'll see how the first one works out and then on down the line, we'll, we'll take it under advisement. All right?
Excuse, no, just.
Dr. Rosenberg.
This is the AP history, the AP government class, this is exactly what they study. These are not, this is not a club, these are serious students who may go into government and law, they have an interest in this. They simply have said, can we invite candidates to come to a forum so that we can experience a positive experience in civics? And can we learn how to run something that's, that's fair and that is a service to the community? The fact that some people are coming and some people aren't, that's not an issue for the school district. That's a political issue and we should not be involved in this. The fact that we allowed the kids, the students, to hold something like this as an educational experience, I think is exactly tied to their curriculum, is, is, is certainly appropriate for them to get involved in the issues of the day. And I don't, I don't see why this is such a, a bad thing. Perhaps in the future, people will see that this is a good thing and all the candidates will come. And then we can, we can judge it by, by its results. But this is clearly, what we're trying to do here, set up a role model situation where the community and the students can see how, how the election process ought to work and they can, they can put their hand in it. And, and I don't see any, I don't see any downside to this. I, I think we have to separate the educational issues from the political issues. And it's none of our business that, that one side or the other is not coming. It is our business to make sure that our kids have a good educational experience and I leave that to the, the staff, who I have confidence in, to make sure that it runs well or runs appropriately.
Mrs. Lay and then Mrs. Haley.
It's a different issue.
Why don't we? Right, so Mrs. Haley.
Mr. Rosenberg, then why did you comment at all about the fact that people were, or were, or were not attending? As the vice president of the board, you shouldn't have said anything, frankly.
I agree. We passed this unanimously, Mark.
We did.
We passed it unanimously.
And?
So why, why comment tonight on it? I don't know why, I think it came to this board for political reasons and your comment was for political reasons.
Excuse me?
We passed it, drop it.
One at a time?
The votes voted for itself, so it shouldn't have been brought up again. That's it, it should, it's a, it's a dead issue, we voted for it and that should have been the only conversation we had about it from then on. I'm sorry.
I think that's what I said.
Okay. Daria.
All right, as a AP history student, I think the whole point of this trip and because it needs to get approved is for a learning lesson. As a student, I would like to see firsthand how our local government works and I'm not going to choose political parties based on this. It's simply a learning lesson, how I can see the logistics and how our local residents can participate in our local government and how these processes are handled. I'm not going to be judging on the political party and I am part of a government class because I would like to see how a local government can be run and how I can be involved in that in any way.
Thank you very much. Shall we move on to Mrs. Lay's issue at this point?
Yeah, I just wanted to redirect the board to a curriculum issue for the students. Because, because earlier I heard Mr. Kinst talk about postponing world language and the reason why I'm bringing this up, I know we're going to be talking about the word language survey in committee and I was going to hold off, but I wanted to understand my fellow board members' positions on this because we, we've been wanting to restore world language for the elementary schools. And I know, I know that as a parent, I think it's important for the students to have exposure to other languages. I think we're living in a, in a, in a world where it's, it's critical to have mastery of more than one language. So I, I was just concerned about what you said.
No, the, my, my position on that with regard to the, with the elementary world language curriculum was that the fact that there isn't a curriculum that's being executed right now, it gives an opportunity for the administration to look at the curriculum, see how it could be updated and improved so that when you reintroduce it, it's, it's the best that it can be, not a rehash of what was done in the past. And actually, the administration, this was in the education committee, came up with, with basically that point, was that it's an opportunity for us to look at it, look at it with fresh eyes. There's, there's, there's been points that have been made, both from the public and from board members, to look at other languages and then also questions of what's, what's the best way to teach and in what manner would, would languages be taught at the elementary level? So I think it's, I'm very comfortable with having the administration go through that process. We don't have, we don't have the positions funded this year, I'd rather, I'd rather have them go, put the effort in updating the curriculum to have, to have the best curriculum rather than rushing to hire somebody half a year with the old, with the old curriculum. You've already lost, you've already, the only thing you gain is, is half a year's of world language. And to me, that's, it's going to be, the continuity is not going to be there because it's only going to be for the three months that, that they're there this year.
Okay, but if they did have a good plan in place for January, you would be fine with that?
I would be, I would be supportive of that, yes.
Okay, all right. I just, I just wanted to clarify. Thanks.
All right. Seeing no more old business, I wanted to talk about doing the board retreat. We seemed to have a positive feeling about doing a board retreat at the time. People thought it was a good idea to, to be able to hash out the, the long-term strategic goals and, and maybe we wouldn't do it on an evening, but we could do it during a weekend. But looking at the responses we got, I sent out an email to everyone suggesting other options, that if people were flexible, we were the closest on the 15th of October and if there was flexibility there with anybody, if that was a possibility. All right, then.
Move me closer on the sixth, seventh of November?
One more time?
The sixth of November, wasn't that also seven of nine?
I'm one of the no's, I'm on, I'll be in key.
It's, it's six.
Oh, six.
I'll be in key, Greg, sorry. Anybody else want to?
And I don't know, I think, Tom's, I got, we got, I.
Twenty-second and the fifth worked well for me.
Right, so, so it seems like we don't have enough people for most of the, and that we were closest on the 15th, but I think that was still maybe just six out of nine. So if, if, would people be willing to come in and do two evenings in closest session?
Yes.
I have two heads nodding.
Depends when?
I'm sure it's going to depend on, if, if, you know, if we can throw up, we don't, we don't want to, this to go too far forward because some of the thought behind it is that going into the budget season and we're making decisions about what we're doing, we should have this plan in mind. So if people, if we get out a, a whatever, a doodle about doing some evenings, maybe they, we don't want to do them like a week apart, but maybe if we did it like Wednesday, Thursday or something like that. So we'll get out a, a program and essentially to mesh our schedules, all nine, or nine, 13 schedules and see if we can't get everybody in the same room and to have the opportunity to, to get the board together to discuss sort of, you know, common ground and going forward and strategic plans and all that sort of stuff. Is everybody okay with that idea? Yes, down at the left end? Okay.
Could we have not just sequential days, maybe spacing one day apart?
You know what?
I need a break.
I got to tell you, if, if all nine, oh, sorry, all 13 people can get together only on two sequential days, we're doing it that way. But I, I'm willing to bet that that's not going to be able to happen, you know? This is what happens when, you know, the people who volunteer try to get together on days that aren't scheduled because they're volunteering or taking some time other places. All right, so we'll go that way with trying to get people all together in the same place. All right? Last chance at old business, seeing none, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed and abstentions?